Are we ready to go? Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Good evening all, I would like to welcome you to the Village Council meeting on Monday, May tenth, two thousand twenty-one. A little clerk please call your way.
Commissioner Polk first? Yes.
Mr. Polk.
President.
Commissioner Polk. Commissioner Reed.
Here, thank you. Let us all stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You have your packets crafted in minutes from our regular council meeting on April twenty-sixth. Any questions, comments, or suggestions? If not, I would see the motion to approve those minutes at this time.
So moved?
Second.
During the motion and a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk, yes. Commissioner Polk. Commissioner Reed.
Yes, the motion carries. Recognition, populations, appointments, presentations. We have proposed appointment this evening, appointment of Michael Wade to fill the zoning Board of Appeals vacancy expiring June first, two thousand twenty-three. Michael Wade is a longtime resident of the village and has shown interest in serving on the zoning Board of Appeals Committee and has a great opportunity to get back to the community. Questions regarding this appointment?
No, but...
Is Michael in the office today? Michael, you don't have to say anything.
Uh, no, yeah, thanks for having me, man. I appreciate the consideration.
Excellent.
You might want to wait till we vote.
He appreciates the consideration?
No, right, fair enough. Talking like a lawyer.
Yes. So, I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Michael Wade to zoning Board of Appeals to fill a vacancy expiring June first, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved?
Second.
During the motion and a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk, yes. Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Michael. We really appreciate your willingness to serve and I know that you will enjoy your fellow members with something more than you. So we look forward to your participation in the future. Thanks so much.
Thank you. All or if there's anything we can do then?
Uh, let's see. We have a consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda routine have been brought forward at the direction of the commissioners and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion has decided that item moved from the consent agenda, it can be considered separately. Item A to approve a lady of peace gravel license and gravel manager permit. We have requests for gravel to be held on July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one at Chicago, Golden Country Club. Item B to approve payment of invoices on the warrant listed in May tenth, two thousand twenty-one in amount of one hundred ninety-eight thousand six hundred eighty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. Item C to approve the supplemental warrant listed in May tenth, two thousand twenty-one for Daniel Jackson, Bureau of Fair and Fair, in the amount of two hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred ninety dollars and seventy-nine cents. We have a motion to approve this.
So moved?
Second.
During the motion and a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk, yes. Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes, the motion carries. Any items of home business we brought to the council at this time? There are no such requests. We will move to work with the commission committee on negotiations. So, we have a number of ordinance, uh, items, ordinance, it's on the item on the agenda this evening. I'll read these. The owner of nine one oh nine West Hundred Twenty-Fifth Street has requested approval to subdivide a final plan of subdivision in existing tax divided parcel containing forty-four thousand five hundred thirty-three point two square feet of lot area and is also requesting a ten point oh two inch variance from a hundred fifty foot lot width as required by section twelve sixty-eight point oh two C lot sizes. Just a little background in history. The owner of nine one oh nine West Hundred Twenty-Fifth Street has requested approval of one lot subdivision and a ten point oh two inch variance for the required one hundred fifty foot lot width. The subject property contains forty-four thousand one hundred thirty-three point two square feet of land and is currently owned and is located in the R one A one family normal system. Nine one oh nine West Hundred Twenty-Fifth Street was previously owned by the owner of the lot currently west, one two five zero zero South Ninety First Avenue. These two parcels were originally one lot of property, lot three of Monson and Smith's second addition to Pales Park, but were tax divided prior to nineteen fifty-nine in the previous year. The east half of lot, of lot three of the original subdivision was built on, in the nineteen fifty's. See exactly six because the subject parcel has never had an original subdivision was built in the nineteen, I'm sorry, house eye. Because the subject parcel has never had a house eye and is less than a hundred fifty feet in width is not a buildable parcel without a variance being required. Additionally, section twelve sixty-eighty-six point one two of the zoning ordinance requires the parcel to be created by plan of subdivision consolidation rather than a tax division before any permits can be issued for the property. Staff recommendation. The staff has reviewed the application, recommends approval of the proposed final plan and variance for the fair and honest subdivision. The plan commission recommendation, on May fifth, two thousand twenty-one, the plan commission held a public hearing, recommended approval on a five to zero of the proposed subdivision and request of lot with variance. Any questions regarding this matter? Is commissioner here this evening? Do this commissioner wish to speak to this matter? Is that necessary?
No, I think it's clear.
Okay. Um, any questions regarding this? At now, I would seek a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash twelve, ordinance approving of one lot subdivision and a lot with variation installation priority.
So moved?
Second.
During the motion and a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk, yes. Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
The motion carries. So we have another ordinance for consideration. This is Village Pales Park, requesting a text amendment to section twelve eighty-nine point oh nine H to eliminate the lighting regulations filed in zoning ordinance and merge them into the building code, chapter fourteen seventy-six, outdoor lighting. Back on January's review of Village parking lot outdoor lighting regulations, it was noted that the language regularly in outdoor lighting was contained in both the zoning ordinance and the building code. This is not a best practice as it sometimes can lead to one portion of code being overlooked during planning. As such, staff recommends that two sections be merged into the building code with language stripping from the zoning ordinance. There are two separate amendments, one to the zoning ordinance and one to the building code that will be acted upon separately. The first amendment to the zoning ordinance is attached to this memo with the transmittal recommendation draft planned commission minutes and staff recommendation planned commission. Staff recommends approval of the proposed amendment to part twelve, title two, chapter twelve eighty-two, section twelve eighty-two point oh nine H to the Pales Park Building Code in regard to lighting and parking spaces. The plan commission recommendation, on May fifth, two thousand twenty-one, the plan commission held a public hearing and recommended approval by the zero proposed text. So, any questions regarding this issue? I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash thirteen, ordinance and pending part four, title six, chapter twelve eighty-two, section twelve eighty-two point oh nine H, Pales Park Building Code in regard to house eye blocking.
So moved?
Second.
During the motion and a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk, yes. Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries. One more related to the previous ordinance, the Village of Pales Park is requesting a text amendment to section twelve eighty-nine point oh nine H to eliminate the lighting regulations filed in zoning ordinance and merge them into the building code, chapter fourteen seventy-six, outdoor lighting. Same background history as the previous one. During a recent review of Village parking lot outdoor light regulations, it was noted that language regulating outdoor lighting was contained in both the zoning ordinance and building code. This is not a best practice. We recommend that the sections be merged and the staff recommends approval of the proposed amendment to now the building code in regard to lighting and parking spaces. And the recommended motion is to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-one, fourteen ordinance from fourteen to six, chapter fourteen seventy-six, section fourteen seventy-six point three, Pales Park Building Code in regard to outdoor lighting. Anyone have any questions regarding this?
So I have one.
Sure.
If you look at the second, the left, the second line to the last line of the little summary that we have.
Mm-hmm, on the agenda.
On the agenda, which starts adjacent area. Are we all there?
Mm-hmm.
Adjacent area lot can exceed one half for candle elimination. Is it can or cannot?
It is correct, can, because what it's saying there is that when there, um, when there, there's parking on an adjacent lot that's used in conjunction with the parking lot on the other lot, then the, then there can be a spillover of candles. If there's no parking on that adjacent property, then it cannot exceed one.
That's the part that confused.
Yeah, I understand why it could be confusing. It's just saying that if there is parking on the adjoining property, then the light can spill over onto that parking area that is used in relation to the first property.
Thank you.
So basically what you're saying is that the two properties or the two...
Areas.
Areas are the same owner use.
Yes.
And so, if the light goes into the parking lot, which is what you want it to do in the parking lot, that's okay.
Yes.
So, we want, we don't want to keep that from happening, we want to keep light from emitting out to neighbors.
Correct.
So. Thank you for your clarity, Commissioner Reed. Thank you. So are you looking for a motion?
I am looking for a motion.
So I'm moved to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-one dash fourteen, pending part fourteen, title six, chapter fourteen seventy-six, section fourteen seventy-six dot oh three of Pales Park Village Code in regard to outdoor lighting.
Second.
During the motion and a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk, yes. Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Yes, and motion carries. Information updates, Public Works and Streets, right there at your court, Commissioner Villages Walsh, here's one.
Thank you, Mayor Monahan. I just have one item on the agenda today, it's regarding resurfacing of one hundred twenty-third place. The Village of Pales Heights included their portion of one hundred twenty-third place in their MFT program, which was bid on April twentieth, twenty twenty-one. As a courtesy to Pales Park, they included an option to resurface the Pales Park portion of one hundred twenty-third place, which goes from the border to McCarthy Road. The bid prices they received are in line with prices Pales Park received in two thousand nineteen. The Pales Park cost is shown in option two on the attached bid tab and the low bidder was M and J Asphalt Paving and the Pales Park cost would be twenty thousand two dollars and seventy-four cents and this money would come out of the twenty twenty-two half percent sales tax fund. Any questions about that?
This is excellent. Our two towns are doing what they should do and working together on streets that are coming. So that's wonderful, that feels, thanks, appreciate it.
Absolutely. I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposal from M and J Asphalt Paving Company Incorporated in the amount of twenty thousand dollar, twenty thousand and two dollars and seventy-four cents, which was competitively bid as part of the Pales Heights MFT program.
Second.
During the motion and a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries.
And then I just have two quick announcements. First is regarding chipper service, which is coming around on May twenty-fourth. Please do not place your branches into the street until the weekend before May twenty-fourth. The branch chipping service will begin on the east side of the village this time on Monday, May twenty-fourth and they should, the branches should be placed out by seven AM on the twenty-fourth. Once the chipper services your street, the chipper will not return until the next chipping date. Please see the complete list of dates and the regulations on the village website under Department of Works Tree Branch Pickup. Just remember, put the cut end facing the street so the guys can grab the cut end to put it into the chipper. Additionally, we have our Arbor Day celebration coming up. It's the twenty-ninth annual Arbor Day celebration, which will be held on Sunday, May sixteen, beginning at twelve noon at the library. The celebration will feature a presentation by Catherine Sofianos on the live, on the library's pollinator turn. Overcooked oak and bald cypress seedlings will be available after the ceremony. Weather permitting, this ceremony will be held outdoors. More information is available on the village website. Hope to see you all there and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Building a public report, a property report, I have a few items that I will read for Commissioner Reed. Construction, conduct, and work hours, we all have a role in protecting, maintaining, improving our environment. Construction conduct means being a good neighbor. Village Code chapters fourteen sixty, six fifty-two, and four eighty define appropriate conduct on construction sites. Please review codes online or get a copy at the chapter's site. The goal is to keep undesirable impacts to allow. Respect for neighbors, safety, and cleanliness will lead to a successful construction project. Contractor worker hours, Monday through Friday, seven AM, eight PM, or dusk if earlier, and Saturday, seven AM to five PM or dusk if earlier, and on a year's day, a holiday, a month's day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas. Homeowners may view construction Monday through Saturday, seven AM to nine PM or dusk if earlier, and Sundays and holidays, ten AM to six PM or dusk if earlier. Please contact the village and notice any work needed on the site, the work hours. Permits, the building department processed sixteen permits from April twenty-second to May fifth, two thousand twenty-one, resulting in four thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars and fifty cents, and then the seventeen inspections were completed during this time period. That concludes the Commissioner Reed's building report. Commissioner Reed also has a number of ordinances for consideration this evening, which I will go through. The first is the ordinance annexing seven ninety-five O West Hundred Twenty-seventh Street, this is a property located at Hundred Twenty-seventh and just east of Avian Avenue. The village has received an application petition for annexation and consolidation of seventy-nine fifty West Hundred Twenty-seventh Seventh Street from Hamid Mahmood, the owner of the property. The subject property consists of parcels of land in total eighty-four thousand two hundred fifty feet. Following annexation, the village council will also consider the consolidation of the parcels as a separate agenda item. Staff recommends approval, the petition for annexation. Any questions regarding this from members of the council? The petition, the petitioner is here this evening?
I have Priya Tera Asu, Officer, on behalf of Mr. Ramon, we're just waiting to consolidate.
You just want to come to the podium, so...
Next, I'm asking that. Priya Tera Asu of Sasa, on behalf of Mr. Ramon, our client is simply looking to consolidate two parcels of land and I said to the village so that you can build a home on the property.
Does anyone have any questions, the petitioner?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, we have, I would entertain a motion to approve this ordinance, ordinance two thousand twenty-one, fifteen, ordinance annexing certain property, seventy-nine fifty West Hundred Twenty-seventh Street.
So moved?
Second.
During the motion and a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed, yes. Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries. Thank you, I really appreciate the investment of the petitioners this evening and the Village of Pales Park, just appreciate it. One more. An ordinance approving a plan of consolidation, again Mahmood, seventy-nine fifty West Hundred Twenty-seventh Street, Pales Park, the owner of the property. The village has received an application petition for annexation and consolidation of seventy-nine fifty West Hundred Twenty-seventh Street, from Hamid Mahmood, the owner of the property. The subject property consists of two parcels of land containing a total of eighty-four thousand two hundred fifty feet. You know, we'd like to consolidate the two parcels into one minus of the building permit to be issued for the development of a new single home. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary final plan for home use consolidation. Does petitioner have anything to say about that? You don't need to, so. Any questions from the council? And it's the companion ordinance that approves the plan of consolidation to the annexation we just approved. Do I, I would entertain a motion to approve ordinance two thousand twenty-one, sixteen, ordinance approving the plan of consolidation, Mahmood, seventy-nine fifty West Hundred Twenty-seventh Street, Pales Park, the owner of the property.
So moved?
Second.
During the motion and a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed? Yes. Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries. Thank you again, we appreciate your efforts. All right. Where are my... Public health and safety report. Commissioner Polk?
Thank you, Mayor. So we'll start with the police activity report from the twenty-sixth of April through the ninth of May. We had nineteen hundred and four calls for service, so we're averaging about a thousand a week, that's record spend. Wrote twenty-seven adjudication tickets and additional two traffic tickets, twenty-one written warnings, eleven verbal warnings, took an additional twenty-one case reports, arrested three adults and unfortunately a juvenile, impounded no vehicles, thirteen senior checks, and additional twenty-two citizen assists. So that's what the police department has been up to for the last two weeks. And then, I was looking for the boss, but obviously he's busy. So I just want to make a couple of quick announcements. The first has to do with our first responders. The Pales Park Police Officers that head out on patrol now take with them a kit to deal with sensory needs and challenges that might be required at any particular given moment. They're particularly geared toward individuals with the autism spectrum so that the officers have the tools that they need in order to be able to help these particular individuals cope in new situations or challenging environments. So each of the patrol cars now has one of these, they have a clever little name, they're called Sensational. One of these Sensational kits, they contain items like noise-canceling earphones and sunglasses and other materials to help calm people with the autism spectrum, dealing with sensory overload during emergencies like ambulances in their driveway and fire equipment and those sorts of things. So, we've really expanded our, excuse me, we've really expanded our training to try and be more inclusive of the individuals in our particular community and this is yet another tool that will help us responding to an emergency with providing additional support to individuals with particular needs. So, just in case you see them putting earphones on somebody in the middle of the street. And then, a quick update, since early winter in two thousand twenty, we've been updating, reviewing, and testing the disaster preparedness plan and the response readiness plan under the direction of the Emergency Management Preparedness Coordinator, who is Officer Frank Flores. The goal is to update review and look into the future, asking questions like what if and how to, and what can we improve, and what needs to work better. And you'll be seeing more as we get towards a final draft and findings, probably with a quick presentation during one of the council meetings. So that's what we've been up to for the last couple of weeks. I have no other issues to discuss. Oh, wait, I lied. The Pfizer vaccine was approved today for emergency use in children twelve years old and up. So that news just hit the streets late this morning. It's only applicable to the Pfizer vaccine, the other ones may or may not follow suit. But you'll be seeing availability of that vaccine extended to younger individuals probably as soon as tomorrow. That will come out.
Excellent.
More than Mary.
Yes. Accounts and finances, Commissioner Paladas.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no official who would be able to see this, and I have my heartstrings. I just want to wish all the mothers a happy Mother's Day and I hope everybody enjoyed the weekend. Other than that, I have no input.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mayor's report. I have an agenda item this evening, and that's a resolution supporting restoration of LGDF revenue. So, what is LGDF? The municipal, the municipal share of the state collective income tax, or as it's known as, the local government distributor bond, or LGDF, is not a grant. It was the basis of the original agreement in nineteen sixty-nine to impose a state income tax. This was intended to be an irrevocable commitment to municipalities in return for their support of the state income tax and also of prohibition in the constitution of municipalities not being able to levy their own income tax as is, is the case in many other states, cities levy their own income tax. When the legislature passed a two percent income tax increase in two thousand ten, there was no revenue sharing going in municipalities providing the state with all the income and reducing the municipal share from ten percent to six point oh six percent. Governor Pritzker is proposing reducing LGDF, another ten percent to municipalities as part of the state's proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget. In addition to reducing municipal revenues, the state has passed numerous what we call unfunded mandates. Last year, and those are regulations and laws which require us to do something that costs money, but there's no funds to pay for them. That happens all the time in the state. Last year, LGDF accounted for a whole five hundred twenty-five thousand, or eleven percent of the village's general loan revenue. Additional ten percent reduction lost to over fifty-two thousand of the revenue. At the same time, the village obligations continue to rise, including the health and public safety potential. The village has seen its annual contributions increase to one hundred and fourteen thousand. This is an increase of two hundred and twenty thousand from a decade ago, a two hundred thirteen percent increase. The village is joining about two hundred and seventy-five communities in our region to oppose any further reduction in LGDF revenues and support the increase back to the old numbers now, the rate of the state. So, what the state has in effect been doing since their budgets have been increasing in the retirement is, while they have increased the income tax significantly during that period... the income tax significantly during that period, they have also thrown out some of their expenses out to other taxing entities. So there's two major ways that this occurs. One is with municipalities with this LGDF. The 10% that was supposed to go to municipalities has been cut back and cut back. So that's great, right? Because they're reducing expenses. No, it's not, because municipalities basically have a bare set of operating functions, which include law enforcement. Law enforcement is over half of our budget. So when they cut the revenue that we're supposed to get, your property taxes increase, other user fees increase. The other aspect that the state has done is, so when they raise the income tax from 3% to 5%, that's not the least of it. So also, the state is supposed to be what's called the primary funder of education. Well, that, the Supreme Court has interpreted that in a way that is completely contrary to common sense. So to me, it means more than 50%, but to the state, it means that it must provide something. So that something for STAG, which is District 230, which is not a wealthy district, is like 7%. So what does that mean for you as citizens and taxpayers? It means your property taxes increase, because that's the only way that your schools can fund, either through state resources or through property taxes. That's basically their set of obligations. So when they raise the income tax by 40%, and then they throw off the actual expenses they do have, it results in greater income tax, or greater property taxation at the local level, and you do not hold them accountable. So the mayor's decided, I went through kind of a long discourse about this at our last meeting, the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus decided that, look, we need to have a public relations campaign to make our residents aware of this issue, that this idea that we're cutting the state revenues is just passing the buck. It's making some other entity have to come up with that revenue. It is not a cost-saving measure. And frankly, as an elected official since 2003, and hearing the stories from state-elected officials, you get a little bit tired of it. You just want your residents and constituents to understand some of these issues, so that we can get some of our elected officials accountable. So I'll get back to the recommended motion, which is to pass a resolution number 2021 Article 5, entitled Resolution Supporting Restoration of LGDF. Can anyone have any questions, comments about this really important issue?
Once they get started, they probably don't stop. It's very, very frustrating when, like you said, Mayor, there is an agreement between state government and local government to give the local government 10% of what the state collected from their income tax, so that the town can money the function. Our particular town cannot raise your property taxes. So that is.
Without a referendum?
Without a referendum. We just can't randomly do it. We'd have to have you vote to do it. And that's a really hard one for people to say yes to, right? Who wants to raise their own property taxes? So they start shipping away at that 10% that we were agreed to get, but there is no accountability for the fact that they are doing that. And then, like you said, other unfunded mandates, you need street signs that are reflective, and you better get that done in three years. We had to find the money to do that, because nobody else was paying for it. We had to pay for it. So they do all those things, and ultimately, we, the citizens, are the ones that end up paying for everything, just end up coming from a different source at some point. But it's not being done fairly. It's not being done in the manner in which things were agreed to years ago, when the municipalities gave up the right to levy an income tax to their residents, against our residents. So I'd say, you know, I think we put some letters on the, our list of representatives and stuff on our website. Write letters, make phone calls, let your representatives know that you don't want the state taking our local distributor fund money and taking more of it, because the only way they're going to listen is if people are speaking up. And it can't just be the mayors in the town, although they represent all of you, unless they hear from the individuals as well, they probably won't take it quite seriously. So.
And I can tell you, they absolutely do listen. When we call, and we call incessantly, and when residents call, they take notice. So if you would, please go to our website, look at the materials, contact your legislators about this important issue. Commissioner Polk?
Yeah, I mean, my two cents echo everybody else's. Since the police department, the Payless Park Police Department represents such a large piece of the bunch of the village, we struggle with this continuously, because literally, month after month, some piece of legislation that now enacts a law that says your police department's got to do X gets passed. But there is no money that goes along with passing that piece of legislation. So, you know, you like seeing patrol cars out at night patrolling your streets? I do too. If, I got to pay for gas for those cars. I got to pay for maintenance on those cars. I got to pay the officers who go out every night to be able to do that. But there is no other way. I mean, we could have probably car wash departments, but there is no other way to raise funds in order to be able to deal with these legislative edicts about what it is that we do and we don't have to provide. And there is no recourse to them. You can't say, sorry, we don't have the money. Thanks very much, because then that puts you in violation of the legal issue that's been mandated. So again, I know it sounds crazy, but if you could take 10 minutes between episodes of Judge Judy, and I picked her because I was watching her tonight before I came. I'm addicted to Judge Judy. I think she ought to, never mind. Talk to the old, I love the century. That's all it takes. The phone numbers are there. The phone numbers are on the website, village of Payless Park website. All you got to do is pick up the phone and dial a number and express your opinion, either yea or nay. If you think it's a great idea, you're allowed to do that as well. But if you don't think this is such a hot idea, please, 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 please pick up the phone, drop an email. All of the representatives' contact information is all available to you, and we'd appreciate your support. Or you're going to see the difference in the village. I mean, it's not a threat. It's reality. That's all I have.
So I would entertain a motion to pass resolution number 2021 Article 5, Resolution Supporting Restoration of LGDF.
So moved?
Second.
Bring a motion or a second. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk will vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Philoletti? Commissioner Philoletti?
Motion. There's a plus. Are you still with us, Jim?
Commissioner?
Please. You got to pay the cell phone bill.
Hi, Commissioner. Did we watch you hang up, okay? Yep, was Mary now? Commissioner, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Commissioner Philoletti?
Yes.
Mayor Molyneux.
Yes, and motion carries. That's kind of unfair to have someone on the phone and then. So Commissioner, you're voting on a resolution number?
Yeah, I don't know what's in China until the vote.
Okay. I just didn't want to blindside you.
No, I don't know what happened. It just went out.
So just quickly, I got a great new brochure from the McCord Gallery this afternoon. There's things that are starting to open up, and there's some great music, art, and other events at McCord starting as early as, I think, June 13th. But certainly is open for exhibits prior to that. This brochure is packed. If you want more information, you can visit mccordgallery.org. Eric? Village manager, the name has not? Announcements, zoning report of appeals meeting scheduled on Wednesday, May 12th, is canceled this Thursday, May 13, 2021. The village will hold a public meeting regarding the Western Growth Area Design and Development Guidelines and draft Western Growth Area Plan Development Ordinance at 5:00 PM in the council chambers. The Historic Preservation Committee will not meet on May 18th, as there are no agenda items. The library board will meet on May 19th at 5:00 PM in the library. The planning commission will hold a public hearing regarding the Western Growth Area Design Development Guidelines and draft Western Growth Area Plan Development Ordinance at 17:00 PM on May 20th. The Payless Fine Arts will not be on Thursday, May 20th, the next scheduled meeting is June 17th. Does any of the audience like, want to make a citizens and visitors call it? There's no separate clause. We can get any emails. We can get any emails. All right. I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting at this time.
So moved?
Second.
Bring a motion or a second. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Philoletti?
Yes.
Yes, and motion carries. Thank you all. Good evening.
Be safe.